Six thirty, reminder to everyone who is here that the meeting is being recorded digitally, so please be respectful of each other as you're speaking and listening to each other. First of all, is there anyone here for open session? Okay. Katie, we'll go to the committee here announcements.
All right, so we have The Beat Generation, which is a cultural review through the music of the nineteen fifties over here at the Senior Center on August ninth at one P M. And all are welcome. So it's in the afternoon and August ninth is Friday. So, but yeah, they are, they have a little thing going on and it's gonna go through like a computer thing and they're gonna have a nice presentation. So it's supposed to be fun, I would imagine it will be, so everyone's welcome for that. We do have a, the last of our summer concerts, supposed to be this Saturday. The rain date might have to be in play due to a hurricane that is coming up the coast, which is super awesome and not stressful at all for these kinds of events. But yeah, so technically it's scheduled for Saturday from five to eight with the rain date of Sunday, so stay posted, stay tuned. A S B is playing and we have scheduled a few different food vendors, Giacomo's, Curious Cravings, Maddie's Ice Cream Truck, and the New England Reptile Show is supposed to be there. So again, this Saturday, possibly Sunday, five to eight at the Rec Field for the final concert of the season. And then we have, I'm pretty sure she wrote, what did the, that Senior Center, it was foundational exercises, foundational, I was hard to read the cursive, so we were trying to guess. I'm going with foundational exercise for seniors on August sixteenth from one to two. Anyone that is interested in that, you can have some foundational exercises for seniors over there, I'm not sure what they're doing, I didn't get any details on it, but that's what we're doing.
Planks.
I, I'm not, hey, that'd be, you know, we walk in and all the seniors are blanking, that'd be interesting.
Foundational.
It is. All right, and then just in case you haven't heard, we have a special town meeting on August twenty-second at seven P M. at the Hubbardston Center School in the gym. So there will be babysitting available, correct? Yes, so if you have littles, email B O S. or the town offices to set up your babysitting. There will be some kids there along with Tricia, and we'll, we'll get her done, yeah, I know, your kids will be there. My kids will be helping babysit. So we do have the Dingy Dash as well coming up on August twenty-fourth at ten A M. The rain date is the following day, the twenty-fifth, this is at Brigham Pond. The deadline to enter is the nineteenth. We have three categories to enter and two prizes for each category, plus we give away some trophies for like best sink and most creative vessel and extended voyage, because if you've been paddling for twenty minutes, you deserve an award at that point. So yeah, so that's coming up. It's Cardboard Boat Regatta, just in case you've never heard of it, but I hope at this point some, most people have. And then the other thing is the Library Five K registrations are open. This I just got wind, it's on the town website, anyone that wants to register for the Library Five K. And theirs is the first week of September, September seventh at nine A M., and it starts at the Center School and they run down Elm Street. So that's what we got coming up for this month. Enter deadline, I'm pretty sure is this month for the Five K. at the end, I'm not sure the deadline date, but it's coming up soon.
Is that a walk or run, Katie?
It's a walk and run, yeah.
You can do it, you can crawl if you'd like, you can skip, they don't really care, they just want people to come and join in the fun.
And then is there any library storytimes this month on Saturdays?
I did not see any, that's why I did not say anything.
No, but Wednesday we do have a special storytime, we have Mr. Bilshay is bringing a velociraptor into the library and Jurassic Park Jeep for the children, so take pictures and.
In the library?
The Jeep is not coming into the library, it's gonna be on the library lawn. On Wednesday, weather permitting, fingers crossed.
This Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
I think Wednesday's supposed to be nice, I believe.
She's learned to seek forgiveness and permission with bringing things inside, because I probably would've said no llamas in the library.
No, no, llamas belong in the library. They, they do little poopy balls, it's fine, screw it up, it's fine.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you, Katie. Is this the gentleman, this the way?
I'll speak first, if you don't mind, I can introduce the topic.
Okay, we'll go to item four, contract authorization request. For the part-time planner of Alec Wade, Nathan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would like to invite the planning board chair to the table as he has been part of this with me for about a year now while we have been talking about this. So select board, I would like you to meet Mr. Alec Wade, he is the planner and director of community development in the town of Boxborough, and he has previously served in the town of Orange and potentially a few other places, but I do not have his resume right in front of me, I'll let him introduce himself momentarily. After about a year of failed research and talking to different people, Mr. Wade's name came to me from our shared accountant between us and Boxborough and from our consultant on all planning services, Bill Murray of Places Associates. After hearing his name from two different people, I kinda sent him a sketchy email saying, hey, can we talk? And he called back and we had a meeting with Chris about two days later where I was able to show him the contract seeking between five and ten hours on average per week, and after that we had a discussion about some of the things that the planning board and community in general were looking to prioritize and that we could not do in our current iteration, namely administrative tasks and being able to focus on things like economic development and actually figuring out ways to become welcoming. So after a little bit of a conversation, which I will let Chris elaborate on, we came to a agreement where Mr. Wade would work for the community five to ten hours, and it is an average, play at forty-five dollars an hour, up to fourteen thousand dollars a year. This can fit within the parameters of our land use budget because of the increase that we placed on for the former land use clerk when there was a timeframe that he was supposed to become the part-time town planner. In addition to this, we will keep a land use clerk. I do not know what the structure of land use is going to be quite yet, Patricia is filling in in the interim, and I will be posting the position tomorrow to see what we get. That person will be the conduit between us and Alec, just to make sure that everyone is getting what they need, that we're providing him assistance, and that our priorities are being relayed to him. I will be working, should this be approved, I would work with Alec directly on searching for grants and that kind of project, because it has been laid out that his employer does not want his name directly on applications, so we would be applying for the applications the same way we do right now, either from my office or from the planning board. With that, I would like to give Alec a moment to introduce himself and tell us a little bit more about himself. Thank you.
Hold on.
Hang on, you're muted.
One second. Can you try again? Nope, then it won't work. You broke it.
Check the light.
Old Westminster Road is better electronics in this place, eventually, if it adds.
No, it's the same internet provider.
Go ahead.
Chair and keyboard, probably, it's not gonna run that kind of products.
Internet.
That should work. That sounded like it.
Go ahead. There you go, you're all set, thank you.
Okay, coming through now?
Yes, you are.
Awesome, all right, well, thank you for having me, everybody, I'm doing double duty tonight, so I'm starting with you, and then I'm jumping over to the Boxborough Planning Board where I do work with full-time now. So as Nate said, I'm the land use and permitting director for the town of Boxborough at present. I had the pleasure of briefly driving through Hubbardston every day for three years on my way to Orange where I was the community development director, and before that I was getting my master's degree over at the University of Massachusetts Amherst, and that was in regional planning, so planning has always kind of been my niche field, it's where I love. I, I kinda find myself in this, this role often where I'm being brought into communities where they're looking to help provide some structures, some, some additional support. In the case of Orange, I was filling in after a planner had been, or the town had been without a planner for two or three years. In the case of Boxborough, I came in after three consecutive planners in the span of three years worth of turnover, and I've been here now for going on three years, which is really exciting. And yeah, I just, I really have a planning passion, I love the work I do, I love strategic planning most predominantly where you're coupling public engagement with long-term capital and strategic goals, and I'm really hopeful that I can help bring support to the planning board in Hubbardston, help give you some more structure moving forward, and help prepare you for the future, whether it's tackling zoning bylaws, supporting review of current applications, and I'd like to get to another community I work with, so you'll fancy seeing me around a couple times, just driving through, getting to know what type of commercial presence, if any, you have, and hopefully coming out to meet the planning board very shortly.
Thank you. Chris, can you speak on behalf of the planning board as to what some of the priorities you're looking to work on are and how Alec would be able to be beneficial in them and making sure that you're moving forward?
Sure, I guess just to take a step back, Christopher Monroe, Chair of the Planning Board, Grimes Road, thank you for having me here tonight, and thank you for taking this under consideration, I think this is a really important move for us to make as a town, and just for the benefit of the public, because zoning and planning is a little bit of a black box thing sometimes for people, because there's so many sources, there's not just our zoning bylaws, there's state law, there's regulations, there's, there's judgments, so I just wanna give a brief analogy on, on why this is the right time and why this is important to us. So I'm sure, like myself, a lot of members of the public and a lot of people in this board probably were used to fixing their own cars in the nineties, where it was easy to figure out what did what, where cars weren't set up to intentionally stop you from working on them, where they were approachable and they made sense. Now, if you wanna fix a new car, you need to be part mechanic, part computer programmer, and have twelve thousand dollars' worth of specialty tools licensed by the manufacturer. That same thing has gone on in zoning, between the, the current pressure from the Attorney General's Office and a series of really strongly worded cases that have really cut down on community rights. It, it really has gone from a world where citizen planners can be effective to where everything is set up to be an obstacle for citizen planners, and we've certainly experienced that over the, the last couple of years as a board, even going back during the time of Chair Livedall. So for anyone who's not aware, Chair Livedall, in addition to being one of the hardest working volunteers in town government, was a very well-respected land court litigator, was an expert on the type of litigation that we do as a planning board. And we were still in a position where the, the bylaws that we were putting forward that we believed were perfectly reasonable were being shot down by the Attorney General's Office, because the system is currently set up for citizen planners to have trouble. So with what we're doing here, we're going to be taking a big step forward, because having somebody who is a planning professional and just doesn't, understands more than just the law, but understands how to work with it and work within it as a tactician, is really the big benefit that's come into the table, and it's been something that we've been talking about needing as a board for the last couple of years, e- even before my time as Chair. And when, when I look back on my experience on the planning board and on the E D C. and some of the asks that have been made of those boards and committees, it's like, okay, well, how do we make Hubbardston more business-friendly? How do, how do we make it easier for a business to get through, but also have it be the kind of business we want that builds the kind of community that we all wanna continue living in? Answering those questions in a way that sticks starts with what we're talking about tonight, because it's putting the right players on the field. And a- as much as I have faith in my board, we, we need this kind of high-level professional help, and we've tried to get it through earmarks, we've tried to get it through D L T A grants, and at some point we as a town have to, have to stop saying we need someone to come help us and we need to make an affirmative step to help ourselves, and that's what we're doing here, and that's what I hope the, the board here votes to support, because the, the, the regular access to a professional planner, the value to that is in combination with the good volunteers we have on the board, and some of the volunteers that also just support the board, and sometimes just show up to our meeting, it's a force multiplier.
Anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Wade or Chris?
I have a question for Chris. So I've been hearing that a lot of our commercial issues lie with the zoning board, because we don't have enough areas zoned for businesses, is this true, or would you, do I need to go to them and find yourself? Is that one of our sticking points, trying to modify the zoning bylaws to be able to allow more business to come in?
It is in part. So the, the Z B A. just adjudicates variances and exceptions to zoning. They don't actually have the authority to change the underlying zoning. That, that comes from the select board delegating it to the planning board. The, the issues that have been identified through the E D C. and also thank you for your service on the E D C. before this.
Anytime.
Is that our, our zoning package as it is made sense when it was done twenty, thirty years ago. And the world has evolved so much in the, the legal framework, and also just our place in the world, like I'm sure we've all, I remember when, when I was actually running for my seat on the planning board, people were talking about like, oh, well, real estate values are starting to go up, who knows where they're gonna go. We now know where they're, where they were going to go, it's almost five years later, they almost doubled in some parts of the town. And, and that's changed our reality and what our reality is gonna be going forward, and having a qualified professional to help us identify the better strategic projects, because we have large tracts of land that are now attractive to developers that weren't when the land price was lower. So being able to, to transition into some of those issues like you were talking about and be more of a planning board instead of a reacting board starts with this, and starts with addressing some of those things.
Just like the automobile, that, that, our, our boards and committees didn't really stay with the times as the times changed. Basically, that's what it boils down to, right? I mean, we didn't, weren't constantly, constantly updating our committees and our boards with the, with everything that's going on in the world and the state?
I, I don't think it was through the fault of anybody, but yeah.
Blaming fault, but it's just like, you know, the car mechanic, you work on your own car, well, now you can't, so basically the same thing. I mean, back in the day, the zoning board twenty years ago, they were, I don't know how they can deal with stuff today, you know, same idea as what you were speaking about earlier, so that's just where I'm trying to get my mind.
You need a degree.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, to work through all the laws and rules and regs.
Yep.
So thank you, Chris.
Thank you, again, we need the practical experience, that's why the planning board's recommending this, and why we support Nate, and the planning board did vote to send the Chair, myself, to work with Nate, to work through this process and come up with a couple options, and supported this with a vote some time ago, so.
Okay.
And I would like to thank Chris for his support over the last year or two. When I came in, the planning board was very, very, very burnt out after not having a town administrator or a land use clerk for a period of a couple of months. Since then, we've worked together very closely, and I do not see that ending, because as much as Alec is going to be able to assist us, he's also going to be creating new projects. But when Chris is a full-time attorney and has a family of his own, and I have a full plate of professional things to do myself, it is just going to be amazing if proved to, if approved to have Alec there to assist us in prioritizing and deciding what to do anyway.
Anyone else on the board have any questions for Mr. Wade or Chris? Mr. Wade, anything else you'd like to offer?
Uh, no, I, I do need to step away, I gotta sign into my other planning board where I, I run their virtual component in just a moment, but thank you for the opportunity, thank you for the consideration, you know, since coming back to Boxborough, Mass., I love my current job, don't get me wrong, but I, I miss being out in Orange, it's, it's a bit of a difference when you, when you go to the different communities, and I think Hubbardston gives me the great opportunity to really kinda get my hands into the nitty-gritty planning work that, that I'm sure your board has to do, and from what I've seen on some of these recordings, so I look forward to, to working with this planning board, looking forward to meeting the rest of you and getting to know your community.
Thank you for that. Do you want the motion while he is still on?
Yeah, sure, so then he knows where we're going and we can.
We have a motion to authorize a town administrator to enter into a contract with Alexander Wade to the position of part-time town planner as outlined.
Salute.
Second for discussion.
Motion made, and second, any discussion?
Just one question, Nate? We've had someone look at the contract?
Yes, K P Law has looked on it on both sides. Correct, you, you looked on your side, I looked on my side, all right.
Okay.
All right, any others? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Most in carried.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. Forward to meeting him.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you, I will take my leave.
Thanks, Chris. All right, we're gonna jump ahead.
See you around.
And we're going over to new business. Item B, administrative matters, the right of first refusal. And can I turn this over to Patricia, who will fill us in, and. That's what you're here for?
Yes.
Would you like to come up and join us?
This is, this is Steven Midas, who is here to have the select board sign up on the acknowledgement of no first refusal option. So what happens is the, if you guys remember, a little ways back, almost a year now, the Greens came to both the planning board and the select board to let you guys know that they were taking a parcel of their chapter land and giving it to their daughter and their son-in-law to build their home. They are trying to close on this wonderful home and property, and a lawyer sent over, since the parcel is now in your name, they're treating it as it's been being sold, it's not being sold, no chapter land is coming out of chapter, it's just, it's changing names from Green to Midas because Rebecca got married and her last name changed. It's a fun little blue law, since the Puritan times, woman is given away to her new family. So there is no land being sold, there is no land coming out of chapter, it's, this is just a formality because the names no longer match up. It's Green versus Midas.
Question?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
So it says, the board further acknowledges a release of the lien recorded against the previous owners.
The lien is passing to you, correct?
So what is that, tax lien?
That is.
Who provides the wrong lien? Lien's a lien, right? Money owed.
So I think what they might be referencing is when you have a property that you take out a chapter, you have to pay the back taxes on the property.
If he were to take it out.
The buyer's responsi-, well, the transferee's responsibility.
Yeah, responsibility.
Okay, that's all I need to do.
If he were to ever take it out.
The chapter.
Yeah. So it's protected property, is that what it is?
It's not.
Farmland?
Yeah.
So it stays farmland?
Yep.
And you get a different tax rate. Now I understand.
I have one question, was this reviewed by our legal counsel?
This was reviewed by the attorney with R R G. and by his attorney, it was not reviewed by K P Law.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, would you accept a motion? Do you have specific language that you need?
I have. Mike.
Yes, Mike.
Mike Saul, Bible Lombard wrote, Chapter sixty-one, I believe that the lien, although it be released from one former owner, the lien would then be still on the property if it's in Chapter sixty-one, or a lien, is that what the motion says?
No.
I'm getting to select board member Peter's question and following up on that for clarity. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. Anything you would like to say?
No.
Okay.
So the lien continues from previous owner to you.
Yeah.
So now you have, you know, as long as it stays at sixty-one, you don't have to worry about it, and I'm sure it will.
Yeah, I'm not.
And this is, is this, what road is this on?
Old Westminster, it's sixteen, Old Westminster.
Is that the new house it's set back?
Yeah.
Nice job. There you go, beautiful, from the street.
Any, any other questions or comments, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve the exercising the town's right of first refusal for sixteen Old Westminster Road subject to K P Law's review. Second.
Okay, motion made and second, any discussion, any questions? All in favor?
Yes.
Post, motion carried.
Close.
We're hoping this week.
I'll send it to K P Law tonight before I go to bed, so that we can get it to the, you know.
Is there anything we need to sign?
Yes, I have it.
We'll sign it afterwards.
Afterwards, okay, fine, all right.
It should be, it should be.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I re-request for a third time of whirl? Can I request for a third time that we take an item out of order and invite Bowie and Attorney Fitzgerald to bring forward what brings them here this evening, which we know what brings them here this evening? Yeah.
So you don't wanna hear me get punchy and say the agenda's just a suggestion?
No.
That was taken. I have objections.
I'm digging, I'm looking, I'm putting together all of our options, I am hoping to be able to have a executive session to hash this out in two weeks from, on two weeks from tonight. That, are there any updates on, on the side of, of paper crane? No.
No.
No, no updates, just chugging, chugging, chugging along.
No, we just wanna figure out, as I said last week, we do, just wanna figure out what's best for the community, and part of the community is businesses in the community. You have been a, been a, been a good neighbor, thank you for your donation to the Library Five K., it was greatly appreciated, but like, we respectfully request another two-week period for review, and hopefully after that executive session, we will have more available for you, and we'll be able to move forward.
Awesome, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, all right.
Sorry, would you make me drive out?
Nope, no problem at all.
It's beautiful country.
Yeah.
Pay by the hour, you feel?
No.
Oh, all right, I like throwing it out.
I would like to.
Thanks, everyone, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Taking it out.
I'm sure he's upset, he's gonna get outside. My apologies for the three back-to-back requests.
Okay, all right, then, back to the strategic calls.
All right.
Okay, yeah.
Oh. I already checked that.
Yeah, I checked it off too, sorry.
What the goals?
Nobody gonna rush tonight?
I know, yeah, seriously.
Yeah, we gotta go through each one.
It's been a long day. It's a break.
No, it's been a long day, it's been a long weekend.
So turn it over to Nate.
Just, I just heard capping.
Was that a bud? That sounded like a bud when I saw it.
It's sparkling water.
Usually that's me cracking something over on the table.
I didn't have time to compare.
For the record, for you guys, you have the slides printed out right here for you, but when you get to the point that has the timelines, that is not intended for you to be able to read that small print.
You can't, you can't read it with even those on, I don't care what you put on your face, you can't read that.
Here's the timeline, what page?
Oh, it does get small.
Yeah, the little tiny, yeah, the little tiny's in the black. Nope, that ain't happening.
I can't move it away far enough.
Yeah, I know, it's like, even on a good day, it ain't happening.
Hold on one second.
Almost, almost.
I can make out the letter A.
We really gotta look through the bottom really good, though.
They are in big, actual type in the large document that I am not going to read into the record this evening. Instead, we will have a nice conversation. Instead of presentation with buzzwords, et cetera. Gables everywhere here.
We have proposed this the other day.
Yeah, we're gonna fix it. Alright, thank you all and I can't believe we are already here talking about the goals for the next year. Feels like we were just talking about our FY twenty-four goals and we did make a lot of movement on completion for a majority of those goals. This is a direct impact on the conversation. This has a direct impact from the conversation we had several weeks ago at the retreat. So you will notice that a lot of this is exactly what we talked about. I again made another fun little image so that not everything is work. Fiscal year twenty twenty-four in review. We did our deficit study. We completed phase one of the deficit reduction efforts, meeting with the structural deficit working group and coming to speak to the select board earlier this year. It was determined, which we already knew, that education costs consume almost sixty percent of the town's budget and that was needed and we needed to figure that out. The QRSD assessment per student increased from nine, nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars in FY twenty to eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars in FY twenty-five. This has a stranglehold on the community, creating a looming deficit that is going to get harder and harder to deal with each year. As you know, we had to use about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of free cash, which is out of, out of best practice, but allowable, to get through this year without having to cause any issues or do further reductions or rely on increased burden to the taxpayer. You'll see that this goal does continue forward into FY twenty-five. The public safety facility project, the public safety building committee met all year with our select board liaison Heather and explored a few different options, one being sixty Gardner Road, one being the community's property across from the Curtis Recreational Fields and another being forty-eight Gardner Road when it was identified as going up for, for auction. It, as you all know, we are moving forward and going to a town meeting on forty-eight Gardner Road and that will be a FY twenty-five goal as well. Um, no. A comprehensive compensation survey. Earlier this year, we compiled a comprehensive compensation survey and it realized that some of our administrative positions were between two and eleven percent below that of similar positions in their, in regional communities. We were able to fix a lot of that. So when we go into this year's compensation analysis, which I do intend on doing every year just to make sure that we are staying competitive and we are treating our employees in a way they deserve to be treated, we will be able to show that we have already taken steps forward. Increasing resident participation. We've had an increase in events like the priority sessions that we held with the legislative representatives and Angobi. Our Facebook reach grew fifty-nine thousand seven hundred people in the last year and a half, or a hundred and forty-nine percent. Website traffic increased by forty-five percent, unique visitors up by a hundred and twenty percent. So this is something that it was, it was good and we are succeeding in this realm and I look forward to moving forward with it. Municipal service efficiencies, we have new, we're still working with the call-in center to present a report on the efficiencies that they believe we could bring to realization over the next few years. However, already we have received authorization from the select board to implement a mail machine, a onboarding software and a time and attendance module. We are rolling those out as we speak.
What is, what is a time and attendance module?
So we're all doing time reporting by, on paper.
Oh, okay.
And by doing it on the computer, it was through, uh, it was two months ago.
Okay.
Like that we did. And so now everyone's going to be able to log into the get, place to get their pay stub, do their hours, request time off, 'cause right now we're doing it just-
On paper still?
On paper and through a Google form.
Oh.
And for almost no monies, we're gonna be able to update.
Okay.
And we will be looking into that a lot more in the coming years. Capital improvement planning. We developed a, a new twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine capital improvement plan, targeting six percent of the budget for annual capital spending. I launched a capital improvement participory, participatory community choice capital program and it was nice to do and no one took advantage of it, but we'll try again this year. Ongoing initiatives. Personnel support, we are still working on, we actually just held the kickoff for the five-year training plans for administrative staff that we're working on with the call-in center. I'm hoping these call-in center reports turn into for, further grant funding to implement many of the ideas that are gonna come out. I was very fortunate to be able to negotiate in the beginning some implementation costs because I had known that the board does not have a loving relationship for feasibility studies that sit on the shelf. So I wanted to make sure that whatever we did do was going to be able to have at least a piece of implementation involved. So we're working on that and we're expecting a report before the end of the first half of FY twenty-five. Site plan approval process review. We have initiated a first round review and are not pleased with what came out. Site plan and permitting is an absolute mess. That's something I'm hoping that between Alec, Patricia, Chris and myself, we will be able to figure out over the next year so that Hubbardston can be more of a welcoming community for those that wanna develop or build homes or do whatever.
Do we know why it's such a mess?
It's set up, as Peter was stating earlier, it's set up to-
To fail.
To block.
To block.
And it's intentionally more challenging than maybe it needs to be, so. On some levels where it just has growing pains over time and administratively has become burdensome and other times, other cases, it was set up to fail. But it is, you'll see a goal coming up soon in the top half of the new goals is searching for a comprehensive zoning update. OPEB trust, which is other post-employment benefits. Uh, we were going to, we set a goal to have me look into what OPEB would cost the town and what it would take to get to a point where we would be able to offer retirement benefits such as retirement health insurance. The gentleman who has a great relationship all around the Commonwealth, his name is Parker, he sort of laughed at our, even thinking we could clo- get close to offering or paying for our OPEB liability. It would cost multi-millions of dollars to get to a point and it is not something that we can even really consider at this moment in time. It is going to continue being studied, but right now unless we wanna start cutting up chunks and putting it, putting it aside, which we don't really have the liberty of being able to do, it's kind of a, a luxury that we would enjoy, but can't.
Must've been a fun conversation when they literally laughed at you.
Yeah.
So basically you need a, a bank to start off with, right?
See, that's the only comment, I don't wanna derail the conversation here, but see, the frustration, frustrating part for me about that is that a lot of towns, and I think we're one of the very few who hasn't accepted OPEB benefits for our employees, a lot of towns have implemented this, very few towns, first of all, have things fully funded. Few, you know-
Almost no one, yeah.
A lot of the towns have some money aside and put some money aside, but I, I think it's a difference between being able to have an OPEB trust that's funded and having OPEB benefits, right? A lot of the municipalities will currently still pay for the OPEB benefits, the few that they are, like, if it goes into effect today and Peter retires tomorrow, then he's on, you know, we're on the hook for him until we can kick him onto Medex and whatever. For those pieces and you budgeted in your regular budget, just like you do the regular health insurance. But there's ways out there, like other towns, some of them are starting to do contributions. So just like when you have a contribution percentage to your health insurance that might be higher if you came in later, you have a contribution to the OPEB piece. I just wanna make sure that, you know, at least from my perspective and for the employees we have, you know, it is so hard to get employees in our town. It's so hard to keep employees. And we have folks who are gonna start getting old and I don't wanna see employees leave because they're going, hmm, can't retire from there. So we need to find a way, i- in my opinion, even if it means that we know damn well we're not gonna have the OPEB trust fully funded at any point in the near future. But at least we start with something. We find a way. We, we negotiate into the union contracts when we turn those over and start getting percentages there, whatever it may be. There has to be so- there has to be, 'cause three hundred and fifty other communities have found a way to put OPEB benefits into play. I don't even know if there's another town that has, does not have OPEB but us.
There are.
Not many.
Not many. And Heather, if the appetite from the board is there, I'll bring it forward. Like, I have no problem. I just figured for such a physically conscious community, we wouldn't want to take on that type of liability without a-
Yeah, but if it's self-paid by the employees, you know, for their-
Or this contributor.
Well, at least, you know, if you can get them at least fifty-fifty with the town, I mean, that's a, that's a big burden off the town. Even though it's not funded trust.
That's not common practice, but I can, I can totally look into-
Yeah, but it, it's, it's just a partial towards retirement benefits, right?
With health insurance.
Health insurance, for, when you retire.
And we would be able to offer it from the minute we-
You know what I mean? So.
I mean, the concern is, right, so we're worried about spending money, but we've talked about this in a lot of other things, right? If we don't fix what we're currently doing, we're gonna continue to have turnover. When you continue to have turnover, you just spend, 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 spend.
Yeah.
We have to retrain people, we have to, you know, get people back into sync and so forth. At a very minimum, you know, and I understand all the positions here and, you know, I wasn't always in support of OPEB myself, but I would say at a very minimum, we should at least survey our current employees and see if this is a factor for any of them because if they say, hey, you know, yeah, at some point, you know, next couple of years, I'm gonna start looking for another job because I'm getting close to retirement age and I am not retiring from Hubbardston because of the OPEB.
Mr. Chair, I respectfully request a straw poll of the members to instruct my office to continue reviewing OPEB possibilities that do not completely fund the liability. If that's something we wanna do, like, just know it's, by no means best practice. You carry it on your books. Like, it's not good to have, but I also one hundred percent agree with all of the things Heather just said.
I also agree because, I mean, I've seen it.
What it is.
How are other towns doing it? There's gotta be small towns like us out there.
They're doing that. Their most communities are-
Well, why can't we look into it and see how much their employees, employees are contributing to these plans? You know what I mean? For retirement bene- benefit for when they do retire. So there is some of what of a bank there for them.
There is a little bit of a feeling that many have towards student loans to this, that hopefully one day the state government will figure it out and it won't be as big of a burden. But really, like, that's a conversation out there as well.
The state government's gonna fix it.
But right now it would, we would be taking on a multimillion-dollar liability with no plan of actually funding it. Not that we couldn't have one, but it wouldn't be a very-
Wouldn't be fully funded.
Yeah, it wouldn't, and we, it would take us many, many moons to, like, we'll put a dollar a year for the next million years.
Yeah, a whole dollar a year is not feasible.
No, I, I'm, that was a-
Yeah, yeah, I know that, but, um...
If, Mr. Chair, if we could hold that straw poll, I will by all means do the research. I will bring back a report on, I will bring you several options, but I do want the go-ahead from the board before I utilize work time to do so.
Okay, uh, here, are you in favor of that?
Um, yes.
Could you handle to look into it? Chris?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Heather? Jeff, yes?
Yes.
On it?
Yep.
Give me a couple months and I'll be back there.
As a, a union employee back in my, uh, middle twenties and late twenties, I worked for an international, I worked for a local union, um, Local ninety-eight, which is out of West Springfield, operating engineers. And we also contributed, not only did I pay union dues to our local union, but I also paid union dues to my international union, which was a benefit for you when you retired. So, you know what I mean? It was minute amount of money. But when you're talking about hundreds of thousands of members, you know what I mean, it adds up. So I understand we don't have hundreds of thousands, but, um, it's gotta be, you know. They, you, you need to sink the seed or plant the seed for a future, so.
Received and understood. Give me a little bit and I'll be back later this quarter with some info and some options that we could potentially consider.
I mean, and one last thing is, I mean, we've made leaps and bounds in the, in the hourly rate for these people and we're still losing people at the highway department. So what is, still a, a, what's the disparity between what they're getting now and what the other towns are getting? Is it a couple bucks an hour?
Highway, DPWs in general are getting a bad rap right now. Just because of what you can make in those fields in the, in the private sector.
Well, yeah, I mean, you make double the money.
Like, that's- Like, I've seen my friends share DPW jobs and some of the comments are ridiculous.
You leave a dump truck here, you go there for forty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it is what, yeah.
We've done what we've, what we can do. I'd say we're high, middle of the pack for-
Better, we're better off where we are now than we were two years ago, a year and a half.
Well, we lost our town treasurer for that very reason because-
Yeah, for retirement benefits, correct.
She did not want to leave because she really liked it and the commute and so forth, but her husband was ill. She needed the health benefits, so-
Yeah.
She reluctantly had to go, take another job.
You gotta go where the-
That gave her health.
Go where the Bennys are.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, after the retreat, I developed this list of strategic plans and goals. Funding, secure and optimize for infrastructure and community projects. Sustainable development, promote through planning and zoning. There are full versions of these shortened explanations in your large packet.
I think that one needs to be a priority. Really.
Yeah, so-
Like, big priority.
They are listed in the way of the, of the priority in which the goals go, so. Service efficiencies, enhance municipal efficiencies. Civic engagement, increase engagement and transparency. Staff support, attract, support and retain talented staff. Deficit reduction, reduce the town's deficit. Facilities improvement, upgrade town facilities and infrastructure. Yes.
Sometimes the way you word things makes me giggle hard. With the redundancies.
Oh, that's purposely redundant.
Yeah, I know. That's what I mean.
Proposed goals, and we're going to go dive in deeper, so I ask that we hold any questions until we actually get into the goal. Proposed goals. Secure and optimize funding for our town hall and public safety building project. Comprehensive rewrite of the zoning. Modernize and update and create a report of the town facilities. Optimize municipal efficiencies. Conduct a comprehensive policy review, which is, to begin it, is on tonight's meeting. Cause I know everyone is a sucker for a good time, so, policy review over. It's gonna be.
I was like, I was looking at the list, I'm like, okay, I'm not even looking at that right now.
Yeah. I did the same thing.
Engagement, increase civic involvement and transparency. Permitting streamlined processes and cost savings, explore opportunities for residents. Goal number one.
Did you skip staff and deficit, or did I miss those two?
I'm looking for it too.
It's fine.
Staff and deficit.
Thank you.
Probably, we probably sidetracked him, sorry. Me and Peter's all.
Goal number one, secure and optimize funding for police, fire and town hall project. Objective, secure funding for forty-eight Gardner Road. Actions, pursue grants, secure funding, community engagement and start phase one. After that, we will be able to move forward with a community effort for phase two. And that is something that I do ask people to, to really, really. Alliterate on is that if we were to pass phase one, phase two would be a community effort. We would be looking for public discussion and public opinion on what the town wants and. Needs to see for this project to move forward. Deliverable, a funding strategy document and a comprehensive plan for phase two within eighteen months. Does anyone have any questions on this?
Can you blow up that little graphic that no one can read, by any chance?
I can.
Uh, I could have to read.
Well, it looks like it has more words in the rest of the slide, so I'm interested as to what those words are, but I can't see them.
Wow. Nothing's happening.
Oh, cause I can't share.
Yeah, that makes happen, right?
Well, that didn't really help at all.
No.
Nope.
Nice try.
But I can read most of it though.
That's a little bit better, I can, I can pretty much read it.
Now I can see that this was written.
Oh, now I can read it for sure.
I'm just gonna lean over to K P over here. Oh, oh, I've been better. Great, thank you, sir.
We have them in here?
Yeah, they're in there.
Oh.
There you go.
Here we go, I thought it was.
Now you can read it, you're just.
Yes.
Aren't you excited?
Made my day.
Out of curiosity, with your timeline, just, I understand how I'm reading it, so the line that goes straight from like. Q one all the way beyond Q four, means it's an ongoing effort?
An ongoing effort.
Okay.
To pursue grants and partnerships.
Yes, forever to go after the grant money, that's like a given.
Alright, thank you.
I will have, because of Mrs. Bracco's comment last Wednesday, I sent it to Heather this morning, cause I know she has municipal experience as well. I have a list of about fifty or so potential grants that would align with this project. I'm gonna take out the ones that are a little bit of a stretch and.
Yeah.
Add a caveat.
Yeah. You got a caveat?
Yeah, I think I, I emailed you back on that one.
Yeah.
Where I just said, you know, make sure you're saying these are a list of ones that we've initially, um.
Looked at, Heather.
outlined as potential funding sources, there's no guarantee.
Oh, absolutely.
That we would actually be successful.
Mm-hmm.
In these ones, and even less so on the, I think it was like seven or eight various USDA opportunities. But.
Heather, no.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
No, it doesn't.
You can't get it if you don't ask. Put it out there, hurry up. Yeah, well, that's the whole thing, you ask for the grant money and if you, you know, ask for ten and get three, you know, that's.
Oh, yeah.
Better than not asking for any.
But with them, the other piece, it's gonna be, it's gonna take a lot of time, because before you've been asked, you kinda have to build your puzzle, right?
Yes.
I'm trying to go for X. How do all these pieces fit together so that you can use one application for one grant to leverage getting another grant? The pieces, but.
And that's a plan that we can write should.
We get beyond step one.
This past town meeting go, go the way we hope it does.
They're.
No, I have a question, um, or more like a statement.
Yes, sir.
I read recently that the program is coming back for new fire stations and police stations.
What you read was a proposed piece of legislation that somebody took and wrote a news article on.
Is that what it was?
The select, the select board has been.
Cause of the town out west, the.
Yup, Lennox.
Yeah.
The select board has been in support of a MSBA styled. Program to build public safety and town hall facilities. Since they, at the very least, you first started doing the legislative priorities with me, likely before that.
The dawn of time.
And since the dawn of time.
They made it sound like there was, like, right at the doorstep.
No.
Did it not sound like that way when they?
A little bit.
Yeah.
And if I did make a comment on that post, and I have had conversations with several legislators at MMA. Meetings about this, and a- all of them agreed that the support is there to pass something like that. What nobody knows is how the money would be, would be brought up, it's.
They're, they're just spending the last year on.
A lot of the billion.
Which shouldn't be here.
But yeah, that, it, it's been proposed every year for at least ten years at this point.
Yeah, alright, I was just curious, I read it, I didn't know what it was about. I knew they used to have the program twenty years ago. And that just be it.
Alright, any further questions on this goal?
We alluded to a public comment that came in, what was the public comment?
It's not talking about people. It was a post on the social.
No, I think he's talking about Mrs. Bracco, uh, she asked.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
So, in a lot of the documentation for the proposal of forty-eight Gardner Road.
Sorry.
Becoming a public safety building and municipal complex, I allude to grant opportunity. So, she kind of just said, hey, I'll hold your feet to the fire, what grant opportunities? So, I'm creating a list of potential grant opportunities that would align with that kind of public safety or rehabilitation project.
Good.
It's a good exercise either way, cause it starts the initial thing, and I think I even suggested you send it to, or reach out to Handgoby's office as well, to see if there's any others.
Yeah.
Yeah, that came up at our last meeting last Wednesday here. Last Wednesday, yeah, with the committee and ourselves, yeah. Yeah.
And, I mean, people need to know the grants aren't guaranteed either.
No.
And they need to know that upfront, so.
They're competitive, but I think we have a competitive project and by leveraging.
Yeah. They do have it. We, huge, yeah.
One with another and so forth, I think it just makes it more competitive.
Yeah. Yeah, and with the state of all our buildings here and the library itself that's been going on for, I don't know how many years. It makes it important to get them out of there.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, thank you, done.
Alright, comprehensive zoning rewrite. Objective, update zoning bylaws for sustainable growth. Actions, review existing bylaws, community engagement, draft and adopt new regulations. Deliverable, updated zoning bylaws and implementation guidelines within twenty-four months. This is going to take longer because we.
I was gonna say twenty-four months.
We do it.
Okay.
It's going to, a whole year is gonna be spent looking into grant funding, cause I believe this will cost us right around seventy thousand dollars.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, I was.
What, up to the update zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah. And subdivision rules and legs, if you're interested.
Yeah, and it's still gonna pass though, town meeting, so.
And it would still have to pass town meeting at the very end of it.
Pass town meeting. Yup, plus what I'm saying.
So, this could be a tremendous amount of work that then ends in disaster.
Well, if you, if you do too much at once, it will. If you try to like upkeep everything all at once, that's the risk you run, it's.
It would be hoped, we would hope that with a part-time planner and direct. Technical assistants and our staff and the planning board and all the stakeholders, we would be able to come up with a plan. That would be.
Strategic.
In the appetite of the community and would just be strategic over time and not necessarily, hey, we wrote this.
Yeah. 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 There we go, let's flip everything upside down.
Yeah, so that's a goal. Modernize, uh, same words. Modernize town facilities and infrastructure. Objective, upgrade facilities focusing on energy efficiency and future needs. Actions, prioritize projects, secure funding, implement upgrades and monitor progress. A deliverable would be a detailed facilities improvement plan. This is a conversation that I've had a lot with Katie over the last year, where I feel like it would be a very important document for us to have just. In one file swoop, when did we put the roofs on different buildings? When did we buy the boilers? What's a, what's a priority, what's A, what's B, and just so we had a, one centralized document on all things facilities. Right now, we have a decent amount of information in many different places. So, I was hoping to utilize this goal to bring them in, centralize it all and prioritize.
So, also have walk-throughs every year, somewhere in that process.
Part of the plan.
Well, that's the thing is walking through, yes, walking through, just to at least look at things, turn on all the faucets, just turn them all on.
Management plan.
Like, open up the closet door.
We're still looking at transitioning over to Maya eventually?
If it was within the.
For health insurance or regular insurance?
For both.
It's if the cost were so, and I've been opening liability insurance every year and very keeps, keeps getting it.
So, the other thing to keep in mind too is Maya has a benefit that the other places don't have, which is they have different grants that they issue on a regular basis, right? One is the risk management grant, so based on where your weakest link is, if you have a history with, um, Maya, which is Mass Interlocal Insurance Agency. Of having losses in a certain area, say, leaking roofs or whatever, or, you know, I, I just did one for a trench box for my, um. Highway and wire department, right, whatever, wherever your losses are.
Mm-hmm.
You can get up to a ten thousand dollar grant each year, so. The reason I bring this up is cause there's other benefits to the insurance that you don't necessarily see in just the general insurance quote that you're getting. In addition to that, with Maya, the more training you do, the more like, they have a checklist, if you go around through the buildings and you mark it like a quarter. And you show them your checklist for all the buildings, you get money off your next, your next cost. Also, at the beginning and for every year, I'm not trying to sell Maya here, too bad, um, Mike Still's not here, he'd be so, his cousin'd be so proud, um. But, you know, I think those pieces factor in and at the end of the day, they might actually reduce the cost, plus they give us a benefit in, in the end, that we're not getting with the current insurance. So.
It sounds basically like a good house, housekeeping clause, you know what I mean?
Well, it's.
Cause you check on your buildings, less chance something's gonna be catastrophic.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right.
And you, but it does it for all of the pieces, right?
Right, everything.
Professional liability training, you get, you know, so many points and you get money off at the end of, at the beginning of the next year for rewards and.
Training. Mm-hmm.
You know, they do grants, they do trainings, they do all of the pieces that come with it, so.
I agree, and I was in constant communication with Joanne when she still worked at Maya, I have yet to connect with the gentleman that has replaced her, but. I did like Joanne, and so. Goal four, optimize municipal services. Implement automation and technology solutions. A- actions, identify solutions, develop plan, pilot programs, monitor and adjust. This is a continuation of the Collin Center stuff that we are looking to save money by being more efficient. Not ever replacing anybody, but finding ways to do more with less.
Mm-hmm.
Which might as well be Hubbardson's motto at this point.
You could rub two nickels together and make a quarter. Sorry. Sure you offer your.
Yep, conduct comprehensive policy review. Objective, ensure policies are up to date and effective. Actions and timeline, review existing policies, updating policies, implementing changing, changes and establishing a review schedule. In the next six to eight months, deliverable, comprehensive review and updated policy documents. I feel like with the amount of change that has been going on the last couple of years. If for nothing else, this will be a positive exercise to get us all on board with what exists, what could be better. What we are doing, what we're missing out. There is also a large part of me professionally that realizes that. In twenty nineteen, a number of policies were implemented, and then when COVID happened, they just were never spoken of again, and now they're on the books, but.
There.
But no one really follows that. So, I just wanna make sure at the very bottom boiled all down that we all know what to expect and what we need to do. Increase civic engagement and transparency. Objective, enhance community engagement and improve communications. Actions and timelines, finalize communications plan, enhance public meetings, implement feedback mechanism. A deliverable communications plan, engagement method, message, metrics.
Thank you.
This will also be kicking out a quarterly newsletter on all things town, so.
Things town.
All things town.
All things.
We'll come up with a nice alliterative name for it.
See.
Hubbardson headlines written.
The paper version.
No, but this is a project that we have been working on and I'd like to take the next few steps. Patricia has shown interest in going.
Ooh, non-such news.
Non-such news, I like it, I like it.
Ah, there you go. Sorry.
I like it.
This is a quarterly thing?
Quarterly.
What, like, a, a senior thing?
Yeah.
You're gonna have like recipes and stuff?
Online, yes.
Scrabbles or whatever on there?
Be recipes.
Only if you submit them.
No, I've. Like, I do.
I want grandma's recipe, anyway.
No problem.
I do my updates and I send them out, but I think it would be incredibly valuable to have a little bit more of an update from everyone on. What's coming, what they're doing, you know, it'll be.
Non-such news?
Non-such news, alright, so that's that. Attract, support and retain talented staff. Objective, improve recruitment and retention through com- competitive compensation and development opportunities. Actions and timeline, update compensation review, launch wellness initiatives, monitor engagement. This is again, working with the Collin Center, we're going to be putting out a five-year training plan for all administrative and finance positions, non-union. So, that'll be great to have with the amount of turnover that has happened in the last few years and seems to happen every few years. I want this community to be able to have it documented, what to do for training, what to go for. And what exactly each job entails, not just a, a job description that is written out and kept in a computer somewhere.
No, we put it in a file cabinet, way back.
I'm not putting anything in a file cabinet.
So, on this one, Nate, on the elaborated version on the computer, you have reestablish a committee to oversee and improve HR practices and policies?
Yes, I want to reestablish, I'm trying to get this done so quickly that I'm forgetting about my own, my own things. I want to reestablish the HR advisory board this year, cause right now we are down to zero members. And I feel like there is not an opportunity for staff to air grievances. That they may have with management without going to the select board and being the tippity top of the, of the scale. The HR advisory board is supposed to be a, a mechanism for people to be able to go to, people to. For us to bring job descriptions to before finalizing them, and there is a whole, it's a town charter. It was brought to us by the town charter, so I feel like, A, we should have it for just that reason, and B, it is very useful when.
There's an issue.
When, when there's an issue.
So, two, two things I would say, number one, keep in mind that it's a public board or committee, so. You have the same problem as we would have, if we have an employee issue, we have to go into executive session, so it's not the same as having an HR person.
Oh, yeah.
I have a gripe, I can go hang out with Peter's office and tell him my concern and he can address my issue. The other thing I would say is before you, you know, we have the same problem that we keep having with everything else, there's no people and it's the same people and the same things, and.
Yep.
That's a problem. The third thing I would say is before you get overly excited about establishing one, reach out to the towns that have one.
Oh, absolutely.
Do a survey, give them the ability to see the results live, cause you'll get more responses, and say, who has one, include at least who has one. Um, would you recommend, would you not recommend, what's the pros and cons of them and why? I've had them. That's just, maybe I just had a bad experience, but I, I think you wanna reach out to a lot of the other TAs and TMs on this one, because I don't think. I, I think you, you're very excited, cause you're looking for the assist. I, I think you, you're very excited because you're looking for the assistance, I don't think it's going to give you as much.
Assistance.
Warm and fuzzies as you currently have.
I, I, it'd probably create more issues than.
It's really hard to get people who have HR experience in the first place, it's really hard to get those people who have that experience to volunteer on a personnel board.
Right.
It's really hard to get people caught up to speed on how a municipality works and how the rules and regs work in the first place. It's really hard, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort, it's a lot of energy. There's probably another way, whether it's a, um, like a regional opportunity where maybe you work with another TA that you're, you know, you just know in passing and you say, hey, can we come up with an agreement that if there's, you know, some issue with me, people can go to you and vice versa, and we share that ability so that we're not our own HR person if someone has an issue with us as HR?
Yeah, we can, we can handle the remainder, but, and without going too far into detail, this is incredibly reactionary. Like I, like that part of this is me, I talked to one member of the board here about potentially doing that, this is a direct reaction.
Okay.
And I will do a, a survey of best practice prior to making any sort of suggestion in the slightest.
Okay.
But I do wanna make sure that everyone is comfortable everywhere that they're working, because this is a, a good place to work, where we want high morale and high efficiencies, and I just wanna make sure that you can have a way to express your feelings on your issues with anybody. You don't have to walk on eggshells, or not to say that that does happen, but we just want to be able to make sure that everyone is as happy as they possibly can be, while.
Well, there's an outlet, there's someplace to turn, yes.
Yeah.
Line of communication, are there?
Yes.
Somewhere to turn.
Yep.
Um, my only other comment is, so just with the launch wellness and morale initiatives, not, I feel like I'm selling, you know, I should get a, money back from Maya, yeah.
Maya.
So Maya does an amazing job with all their health and wellness apps, and when you have them for your health insurance provider, even if you have employees who don't take the health insurance, they still have access to the majority of their services, including the employee assistance program, and they have mine wellness apps, they have free employee coaching, um, counseling for all the employees, like it's just, it's a fabulous program. And as much as I applaud, you know, the idea of trying to get wellness and morale initiatives, unless you're sole HR director in a community, you don't have time. And other people, you can't, I mean, people are already taking on how many jobs do you even do now, Trish?
Thirty-two, thirty-five?
Right, like, there's, there's just not time, but that's what I'm saying, you know, and maybe that goes back to the efficiency piece, right? The fact that, you know, looking at Maya to accomplish a lot of these sub-goals that you have, to be able to say, okay, we're providing a better service to the employees, better service to the communities, we're doing a better job of our buildings and all of these pieces, it's not costing us more, we're saving stuff and we're getting the benefit of these reports, you're getting the benefit of employee counseling and so forth, all that.
Did you know that Maya will pay for about fifty percent of your gym membership?
Uh, actually, they just modified their program and now they'll actually cover up to a three hundred dollar health benefit on an annual basis per family, and that includes the purchase of athletic shoes.
Athletic shoes?
Athletic shoes.
Well, this walking shoe, I mean, I think if I tried stilettos, they'd tell me no, but.
You're in the wrong field.
Yeah, trish shoes.
What, what is, what is the difference between insurance we have now and this company Maya, and obviously, there're gonna be more.
I'm about to say like, if I go, man, I do.
Money, tall money?
And it's, and it's a good amount of money.
A good, a substantial amount?
Not a hundred thousand dollars.
So, so be it away, the benefit you get with a company like that and the benefit you don't get with what you have now, and see what the money difference is.
Mary and I looked into it last year and the Quabbin hadn't reported their numbers to the state in two years. So Maya thought they were gonna be able to get us this outstanding deal and we were gonna save a ton of money.
Yeah.
But then as, as they were doing it, they realized this reporting failure and went to Quabbin and they couldn't touch the number that we have at all.
So they also look at, when you're in a large pool, and by large pool, a good portion of the three fifty-one, including some of the school districts are part of Maya,
Mm-hmm.
your loss ratios are a lot more cushioned, right? Because they don't give me, if I have a lot of large claims, I don't get hit as hard on the town side, because they can balance it out. They keep these towns amazing, they didn't, they never have any problems, they're just all perfectly healthy, they run like ten miles a day, they don't have any health insurance. Keep these towns, they cause all the problems.
Yeah.
And, you know, but, and I'm just more, I'm just in the middle, but they average all of them together.
Broken lanes.
They average them all, yeah, because you got one town that's gonna have more claims than a town that doesn't have any claims, so.
So.
This one wipes out some, some of this one, and this one not having any wipes, wipes the rest of it out.
So if we have a really bad year and we don't have as much to balance against, you know, we could see a twenty, twenty-five percent increase for health insurance, but with Maya, they're able to keep it in a lower number, so even if we would have had a major increase, they can push it down to like twelve percent, fifteen percent, whatever it may be. So, I know, I'm selling Maya, I'm gonna call them and say I need a, need a cushion here.
Well, it sounds like they have a lot of benefits that you get for insuring with them, and you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's just being able to handle that upfront.
Well, they have, they also have, you know, grants on the other side too, so you wanna do the morale side, you can get fresh fruit, you can do training, you can get an exercise routine, whatever, they do up to five thousand dollars a year. So, but it's, it's the opportunity to be able to accomplish these pieces, and I think it would actually kinda go under the efficiency, because they take care of handling all of those pieces and make it a lot easier to manage.
And, and, and in turn, the employee, I mean, it's a benefit for the employee to have all this extra stuff available.
Absolutely.
So, and then that increases morality there, right?
Yep.
You're getting more bang for your buck, in other words, so.
Sorry, did you mean derail?
No, I, I mean, I, I need to, I didn't even know they existed, so.
Yeah, when I was in the town of Princeton, almost all of the communities I've been in before this were Maya communities. In Princeton, we made a jungle theme by utilizing the, the grants to buy all these different plants, like the place is kinda ridiculous looking now, but plants are healthy for.
They really are, they.
For you.
I, I have like over three hundred in my house.
They're covered under the wellness grant.
It's wonderful, lots of plants.
Alright, next. Goal eight. Implement a deficit reduction plan. Objective, develop a plan to eliminate the town's deficit. Actions, conduct audit, review and adjust budget, explore revenue streams, present plan. Deliverable deficit reduction plan and financial sustainability roadmap. This would consist of a audit conduction in quarter one, quarterly budget reviews and implementation the whole year, a exploring revenue streams, and during mid-quarter two, review and adjusting the budget ahead of next year's, and presentation of a deficit reduction plan. I have already called Francois, Brett and Tim, noting that we're getting the band back together. Everybody was mildly excited. Any questions about that one?
Nope.
Goal nine, streamline permitting process.
We're still dealing with this?
It's not, yeah, it's, well, the zoning, it's not trigg, like there, it's not triggering, it's not.
For this, I'm talking about permitting in general. Like I want, but like even at a select board level, you go to our page, there's one app, there's no instructions.
Yep.
So this is me wanting to revamp licensure, turn, start a licensure page at the very least. Anything we could get online, we will explore that and we'll go that route, but at the very least, this is me trying to get it all in one place so that people, residents will know what they can apply for and where to get the application and update all the applications. It would be a improved permitting efficiency and accessibility project. Actions, conduct additional assess, initial assessment, redesign processes, pilot and adjust, and then full implementation. And I do believe this will be one of the easier projects, but I think we get a lot of bang for our buck with this.
How about streamlined business, um, opportunities in town, like pulling a, um, business license, things they gotta do?
Yep.
I mean, we've been working on that, I mean, on ED, we worked on that for four or five years now and it's gone nowhere.
That is like, is like, top three goals for Alec to work on when, when he begins here.
Okay. Why, why, I, I don't understand why it doesn't go anywhere, we started this process. I know I made phone calls four years ago, I fell on deaf ears.
Because once you go down that rabbit hole, you run into zoning issues. So we could clean it up administratively, and Patricia and I have, I have, I've created tons of lovely forms and they're great and they look pretty, but when you go down the rabbit hole, you end up running into zoning issues.
Well, zoning needs to top of the priority list.
Any further questions on that?
Oh, no, thank you.
Final goal, explore resident cost-saving opportunities. Objective, investigate regionalization and aggregate services. Actions, collect data, develop feasibility report, engage stakeholders and implement aggregation. Deliverable feasibility report and cost-saving opportunities. Where this came from is I was already working on three different projects that were going to, if successful, be able to save municipal, not municipal money, but residential money, that being municipal aggregation, the, the trash regionalization project,
Trash?
and the fiber opportunities project, so I figured that since there were three of them, I should combine them and make them into a goal. That's that. I would like to thank you for your support, I do, insurance bill's going up again, it's two hundred bucks by the way. We're gonna be putting out an RFP in September, October.
Quarterly.
Would you call on our.
Quarterly.
Call and argue.
If there are any further questions, we can obviously talk about that, if not, I do request the acceptance of these goals, either as presented or as amended.
I'll just flatten it out as we come down the street. Yep.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion.
So who's second?
The motion.
Yeah, I have, sorry, I, what he said.
Accepting the goals, that's.
He can't make a motion.
So moved.
Katie would like to make a motion to accept the goals as amended.
There you go.
I would like to second say.
Okay, motion is made and second, any discussion?
Thank you, Heather.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Within the year, then, Mr. Nate?
We're gonna do it.
Was the end of your contract?
Been talking about it.
Alright.
I guess.
Thank you. Alright, moving on, we have a consent agenda, um.
Ah, Chris Ward.
We have confirmation of appointments, Elizabeth Patelis, member of Board of Health, um. What's the AT?
Any town election.
At town election.
Oh, at the town election, okay, twenty, twenty-five.
Oh, election, sorry.
Daniel Bourgeois, Civilian Traffic Control Unit Police, six, expires six-thirty twenty-twenty-five. Michael Capps, Civilian Traffic Control Unit Police, expires six-thirty twenty-twenty-five. Are there, uh, any, um, holds on any of these? Okay, we could have a motion to.
Yeah, I got a hold.
Okay.
Um. How does the civilian traffic control unit work? Is it a, um, is it a call type thing, an all-call type thing?
It's a call type thing and the union officers get to go first, so it's written out in the union contract.
So it's.
It goes through our union officers, through the part-time guys, and then onto a list of people, all of them are former police officers. They get paid the going rate of fifty, uh, fifty dollars, right around there.
Okay. Anything else on that? Alright, could we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
And second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Okay, uh, under new business, uh, the special town meeting and article recommendations. Excuse me. Do you have anything to say on that?
I have said a lot on these articles and then.
Let me just speed this up, I'd like to make a motion to, for the select board to, uh, recommend both one and two on the town articles.
Second.
A motion made and second to accept the, uh, articles for the, uh, warrant.
Recommended.
Recommended, okay.
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed, motion passed, okay. Under administrative matters, um, strategic goals adoption.
All done.
All done, yep, okay.
Actually removed it from the rest of it, because I figured we'd just do it on the front end, but.
The grant acceptance, Mass DEP, technical assistance, regional waste and recycling services.
This is a grant I applied for and received through Mass DEP to work with that woman Irene from the Mass Trash and Recycling. We have a year of her services, the plan is to release a request for proposal to see what trash haulers would be willing to bid on Hubbard's in Princeton and Rutland as a unit.
Do you need a motion?
I do.
I need, I would like to make a motion to, for Nate to be able to accept the grant, is it for you, you are the town.
I accept it.
Okay, for Nate to accept the grant for Mass DEP technical assistance, second.
Motion made and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Okay. And the contract approval for Hubbard's Center School boiler replacement.
Boy, am I glad this is done. We, I have been working on this since the day I started, I have walked through the school with Peter twice, Katie twice, like, like we, it has changed its price several times, we've had issues.
Yeah, that's crazy amount of money for that job, crazy amount, like triple, triple.
I'd like to thank the state senator for coming through with an earmark of sixty-six thousand dollars.
When's it getting replaced?
Yeah, what's the total, what's the total now?
One fifty and change, I'll have to pull it up, for a twenty thousand dollar boiler. Yeah, we utilized the fifty thousand dollars from annual town meeting twenty-twenty-three, the sixty-six thousand dollars from the legislative earmark, and then approximately ten thousand dollars in the capital funds that we're, were approved at town meeting in twenty-twenty-four. We do not need to utilize the entirety of the sixty-five approved because of the legislative earmark.
Are we in discussion on this now?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I don't like the date on when they wanna start this job, because it means we gotta go through another winter with a leaking boiler.
And the school is comfortable with that.
I'm not comfortable with that, I don't, the school doesn't know anything about boilers, I'm not comfortable with that.
Tens of, you talk to them.
I'll talk to any one of them.
That's what I mean, it's, some people are comfortable, some people are not comfortable with it.
Well, they won't be comfortable when their classroom, everything's frozen in the building because the heat went down, and the backup can't handle it.
I totally. I agree. We're limping. It's limping through, I totally agree, I think it should be replaced before the winter starts.
Leaks don't get better.
I, right there with you, Peter, I feel that it should be replaced now, before the season starts.
Why is the, I, why is the contractor put the date so far out?
That was the requested date, and then when I ran it by Kevin, he was okay with it, they wanted to do it, well, during break.
You better get a, a reserve boiler on a trail of standby.
What was our requested date when we put out the document, did we say we want this done by X date?
That document is a year old at this point.
Yeah, we were waiting for money. So that's the problem.
I just, I, the spring of twenty-twenty-five is how far away?
I, I agree.
Eight, six, eight months.
Yep, and you gotta go through the season.
Longer than that, because winter's six months long.
Mm-hmm.
So, you're talking, you know, six, eight, nine months, almost another year before that boiler gets changed.
I'll make.
How did we get them to hold their bid open for so long?
Because they kept increasing.
I'm quite nice.
Oh.
Yeah.
But they went up the price too.
Of course they did, yeah.
It's not like they.
They didn't lock in the price, so.
Yeah, it wasn't, they didn't stay.
Well, it sounds like the question is what recourse do we have?
About to say, I don't think they had any.
Go back out to bid and hope to hell that the number doesn't come in higher.
Is this the company out of Midwest or somewhere?
Well.
Nope.
Where are they at?
They are out of Ohio, I will hope it is.
I don't know if I've seen the recent. I thought the local, the company wasn't even local, they're out of Ohio or somewhere.
Well, there's, this, so there's the two boilers, so there is a smaller boiler that is, they have. The, the big boiler is the one that's leaking, the big boiler does the bulk of the heating. The problem is, is A, it's leaking, um, but B, if it goes, now we're going to limp with the. Um, but B, if it goes, now we're going to limp with the smaller boiler that won't be able to keep up.
It won't, it doesn't do the whole building.
Exactly. So if everything goes to hell, it's gonna be not good over there at the school.
Yeah, and does anybody have a list of what that does heat, the backup boiler? Just the offices, not the classroom?
I was told, but I can't remember now. It was too long ago, I don't wanna speak.
I'd be curious about that.
It's in a laundry list of emails somewhere.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna speak to it 'cause I don't remember exactly, and I don't think I get it right.
Like I said, start researching. Boiler's on wheels now, I'm telling you.
Well, that's the thing, is between the hot water and the heat, because there's so many wings of the older parts of the buildings.
At, at thirty thousand a month. For five months.
Yep, I, right there with you. I think it should be replaced before the heating season.
Yeah, I know, I, I know you are. On the read.
I will make that request tomorrow, and he just wanted to do it while the, while the students were not in.
That is.
They're not in.
Well, we could do it before the heat.
What's, what's the time? Did, did they send, did they send a contract? I know there was a contract out, right? What's, what's, what's it, a week job, seven days, five days?
I understand why, what's the deal with whether the students are there or not, because there's still the smaller boiler that can run while they're really.
He had it all summer.
The big boiler.
I don't understand, 'cause you know lots.
We didn't have the money.
Oh, we didn't have the money, no.
Until the FY twenty-five budget was approved last week.
But, but still, this company is putting you off nine months. What's that tell you?
And the thing is, is they can come in and out from over here or the front of the building. It's not like they have to go in the main and like.
They're booked up. It's easy access. It's down two steps.
Yeah.
I will, I will make the request to see if we can expedite the, the project and let you know via email what they say.
'Cause if it blows the hell up.
If the best option at this time is to reopen the bid, then I will, I will obviously do it. But when, when we opened this bid last year, this was our only, this was the only person that submitted.
So is case in anyway.
You're right.
If they're freezing in the school and not listing anything else that's going on.
And I talked to a person that's in that business, and she was quite shocked 'cause she didn't know anything about that bid. So, either they didn't do their due diligence, 'cause she's shocked, 'cause she said she would've bid on that job.
Well, the whole thing is, is.
And they're right out of, uh, Truesberry, Westboro.
We don't have, we're not tied to this company. If you want me to reopen the bid, just don't authorize me to sign.
I don't wanna hurt.
No, I don't.
I mean, we're locked in at a price.
You, to get them to do it out, that's what I want.
I mean, uh, a little of Dow is tanking, so that might be a good thing.
But we, so we haven't signed the contract yet, right?
Nope.
But who's to say that if we reopen it, that it's gonna get any faster in terms of the process?
Well, and also, well, the one thing we can do, Jeff, again, cost comes in a place. When you do something like this, you can say it has to be done by X date, right? I want twelve digits, and I want it by December first.
Mm-hmm. Oh, it's part of, it's part of the, yeah, did. Okay, uh.
Yeah, we can give you a window. You pick when you wanna do it in this window, you know what I mean? Well, the window's getting smaller right now, 'cause they're going back to school in three weeks, four weeks.
But just keep in mind, you know, my, my biggest concern is the cost could go up.
The cost is gonna go up.
Correct.
So my suggestion would be that we have may see if they can do it.
Work with them. Yeah, I agree. Yeah, no, I mean, the price is locked in, now,
That's the plan, I will ask.
I mean, you gotta sell it. That's what you're gonna do.
Yeah.
Tell them, say, listen, I mean, this thing's been leaking for eighteen months. It struggled through two winters. It's probably not.
Thirty years old.
It's thirty years old, it's got a leaking.
It's thirty-five.
I know, it's thirty-five years old.
Did they come out and look at the job?
Yes.
They did?
Yep, they were there that day.
They were? Yeah, what the hell was that, was that?
I think he was there. I will do my due diligence and ask him to move forward.
I just, I just, that's a long ways off me. I just feel like.
Before the, they.
We wait that long, I just have a gut feeling it's gonna cost us a hundred fifty thousand more than what we're paying right now for ten boiler.
Yep. I mean, like, I'm not even against Christmas break, you know, I'm not.
You can't send the kids home if there's no heat. You can do it maybe one day, but after that, you lose your building, because everything pops and grows.
Yeah, you're gonna have all these freeze.
You're gonna have leaks everywhere, and now you're into it for ten million dollars.
'Cause the other problem is, is while you're doing it, you're down to one boiler and you gotta worry about.
Which is gonna struggle to heat, what it's gotta heat anyway, so.
Yeah. So, at the latest, I'd wanna see Christmas break at the latest.
I will have that conversation.
I would, much more before November break.
Mister Chairman, would you take a motion at this time?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize Nate to sign the contract for the boiler replacement at the Hubbardston Center School, contingent on his continued efforts for further conversations relative to expediting the timeline.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Yeah, I got a discussion. Say it again.
Oh, I don't know if I can.
I have to ask if they can move the, if they can move it.
And what if they can?
We're stuck. 'Cause they're the only bid. But then we could reopen it, but we risk the cost going up.
And also.
You need something done quickly, the cost is gonna go up.
Yep.
How big is this company?
Decent sized company.
I've never heard of them.
Well, the other thing too is, is there's no guarantees. Another company could get that type of boiler in very quickly.
True. True.
Do they have the?
And that might be part of the issue of why it's.
It's a wall McLean. Everybody stocks wall McLeans.
You'd be surprised. Everyone stocks this, that, and the other, but it's not, because everything's been all screwed up with shippings and little pieces and parts that aren't making, I'm just telling you. My husband has the same problems with refrigeration. There's a lot of stuff you can't get right now.
And we checked their references and their references are good?
Yep.
And they've had, done other municipal jobs, or school jobs?
Can you say the name again?
McCloskey.
Never heard of them.
McCloskey Mechanical.
Where are they at?
They have a Leprechaun.
They do have a Leprechaun.
Where are they at?
Uh, everywhere.
New England.
The Massachusetts one, I have no idea. No, there is a Massachusetts, oh, yes, there is. They have a suite in Redfield Street in Boston.
So you're in a sales office.
Otherwise, they have Blackwood, New Jersey, DC, New York, Orlando, Dallas, Raleigh, Nashville.
They're not local, they're not local. That's why they put you off.
Very big. So. Start getting.
That's why the, the, the date is what it is, right?
Yeah.
They wait till a, a group's done close to the area, whatever, a few hundred miles.
Yeah, they come, come to you all at once.
So, we still have a motion.
Yeah.
We do.
First and second, and any other question on it?
I still don't understand the motion. I need to hear it again.
Uh, the best of my ability to authorize Nate to sign for the, the contract for the boiler replacement for the Hubbardston Center School, contingent upon his continued efforts to negotiate a closer or a shorter timeline.
Earlier date, okay.
Earlier start date.
So, so he's only gonna, he's only gonna sign the contract if he can get an earlier date?
No, he's gonna have continued efforts to negotiate an earlier date, and if he can't get an earlier date, he's still gonna sign the contract.
So we're signing the contract, yeah, that's, okay.
Pretty much.
All right.
But we're putting in that extra effort.
I'm gonna try.
He said he was gonna try ten minutes ago.
Oh, we added it to the line. I mean, he'd feel better.
Okay.
Okay.
So anything else on that? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Yes, aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Uh, oil business department already taken care of. That's table to next August, yeah, August nineteenth, meeting. Uh, town administrator report.
Um, I'm gonna do this very quickly. We've been, I've been spending a lot of time doing special town meeting preparation. The FY twenty-four financial flashback, which is another alliterative name, was released today. You should check it out. I am currently updating the town inventory. I plan on having that for your acknowledgement at the next meeting. We held our monthly staff meeting last week. Everybody seems happy, healthy, and thriving.
They all showed up.
They all came. Meeting attendance. I attended meetings of the finance committee, open space committee, council on aging, and board of health earlier this month. I still aim to attend one meeting of each board quarterly. Uh, we will be holding the biannual meeting of the chairs later this summer. The FY twenty-six budget planning schedule will be available for your next meeting. Sarah Risch began her role as a assistant treasurer collector. So far, so good. Project and procurement updates. The senior deck project is ongoing. Uh, Patricia and I currently don't have windows, so that's been great.
Yeah, I know.
It's just throwing me out. Like, is it raining? And jackhammers have been going on for three, two, two days.
Yeah, he hit this, I lived building with the excavator at one point, and I seriously thought that that excavator was coming through the wall.
Oh, why's it got a vibrating thing on it to smash concrete or something?
You sure you wanna keep it, it's right there?
He had the jackhammer, but then actually they were scooping out the broken up concrete, and he just nudged the side of the building with it.
Oh. Oh, you can't do that.
That was terrifying.
Make sure you take photos.
Is the wall still okay on the outside?
Hostile work environment.
Better than it was?
It's back in place now!
I am collaborating with Alice Lipton on a grant for technical assistance to review Lot fifty-seven, Pitcherville Road for potential senior housing. I will have that for your consideration at the next meeting. It is going in front of CPA Wednesday.
Thought you couldn't do senior housing anymore.
You, there's, uh, Alice.
Mm, they're gone, all right. Okay, I'll leave that alone. I'm not even touching it.
We held a kickoff meeting for the HR training and development.
The status come down.
This morning, Patricia and I went and met with Rutland on our dispatch agreement. We are going to be seeking funding from the state nine-one-one program to potentially do a feasibility study of a district model instead of a model pretty much owned and run by the town of Rutland. We will update you on that as we move forward.
Have they, uh, been keeping up with their contract that Jeff and I spent a lot of time at? They have? Have they been more, is what's-his-name still in charge?
Yep.
I thought he was all done.
No, Michael.
He's not?
Still there.
Anything ever happen to himself?
Yeah, I, I thought he was, I thought he was retiring too.
So you were just.
The RFP.
So you just renewed it?
No, we renewed it, but we didn't renew it with, remember when we wrote the letter to, to Rutland saying that we wanted a, a seat at the table? When, that was this conversation.
Okay.
The town of Rutland is willing to explore what would be called a district model. It would be run like a, like a select board, like the rest of our town. So the select board, the board of directors would be, would oversee the executive or director or whatever their title would be, and then that person would run the, would run the operation. The board of directors would interview the person, they would be part of their performance evaluations. The board of directors would be part of contract negotiations. But none of the communities have the money and or time to do that type of feasibility study on their own, or really the knowledge base. So, so we're gonna seek funding to, 'cause I don't know if, if it, moving into a district model would be cost beneficial for us, or?
All the way they keep skyrocketing, yeah.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, they, they need to start answering for their increases every, I know it's based on population, but, um,
Ours hasn't grown that much.
I mean, we pay one-fifth, we should have one-fifth say in what goes on over there.
And that's what we've requested.
I know that.
If this doesn't work out, we'll find another way to have the conversation. That would, just, that was the update for this evening.
That opened the rabbit hole.
Yeah. We're going to have a larger conversation about this.
It's supposed to be transparent.
FEMA public assistance appeal. We are finalizing the appeal with a report expected in the next meeting or two. The hard work of several staff members has reduced the amount from a hundred and forty thousand to approximately eighty thousand.
That we don't have.
We have, we are waiting on that. The Department of Revenue will likely allow us to pay this over three fiscal years. But we're, Kelly and I are going to come next week or the week after and give a update on that. I would like to thank Kelly and Chief Kuchar and Chief Hayes for working with me over the last six months to put all of this together. Had we not worked on the appeal, we would've been on the hook for the hundred and forty thousand that we were originally denied. It is a lesson in trusting the federal government.
Yeah, but I thought that they're the ones that gave the okay to go ahead and do it.
They did.
But they didn't get it in writing.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it probably wasn't writing, and then they just reagged on it, so. They can do what they want, and if.
That's 'cause they change the rules every week.
I, right there with you.
Municipal aggregation. We're working on documents for the proposed rollout. We are submitting with the DEP later this fall. Library Foundation Project Phase One bid will be released later this week. Library Green Energy Project and Heat Pump. I am pleased to announce that ECI is ready to get this going. National Grid has agreed to put in three phases.
Really?
And ECI will pay for it. So.
Really?
Yeah, so that is gonna be good. We have to talk to Kelly about figuring this out, 'cause they kinda wanna figure out. They, for them, they need the project done before the three phase could come in. I'm negotiating with them to figure it all out, and we'll let you, we'll let you know. This is brand new.
Figure it out. Okay.
Trail Crossing RFP is going out this week, and the Regional Trash Haulers RFP will be out in late September. That is my update for the evening. If anyone have any questions.
Any questions on the?
Yes. Um, any word on a tree laying on the wires up across from forty-eight, down the road?
I sent it in the picture to National Grid.
Okay.
Again? It's like, haven't they been contacted more than once for this?
That, when we saw it the other day, was the first time I was made aware of it.
That you were.
Yes.
It's been there for a while.
No, I know that one of the neighbors called National Grid to have it, 'cause it's, and it's.
It's direct line to their.
A tree laying on the wires up across from forty-eight.
Oh, it's right on the road.
Right.
On the road.
Potential fire.
Live wires will come down, tree will come down, it'll create a whole big mess.
Yep.
Okay. Um, policies to review, policy review calendar?
There's a policy review calendar. Does anyone have any changes on the policy review calendar?
Negative.
You know what I'm gonna ask, though? Is, can I get printouts?
Oh, printout of everything?
And I only see like one meeting in advance.
If you had your computer, you could just print it.
You're gonna kill five hundred trees with that.
I know, but I'm such a, I need the physical paper. I'm so bad, you know?
You gotta, you, you have to touch.
I can't even see anymore. Like, I just, I need the accommodation, okay?
You have an ally in the executive assistant, but I am still digging in my yields.
I'll pay for the copies.
We don't have a revolving fund for copies.
I'll make a donation on an annual basis.
So why don't I just?
Listen, listen, we just okayed that Kiocera for you. Get her the papers.
I'll bring you a paper.
You gotta kill like five trees.
I know, but it's so hard to review things for me on, on a computer.
They just cut down a lot on New Westminster, so that's how busy.
One way, I think, looking at a three-page document.
No, it's just. Yeah, it's just a schedule.
No, that's just the schedule. Each one has its own.
There's no attachments. That's as intense, it'll go down.
Yeah.
So August nineteenth, he wants to take over.
So you're talking about.
I have another question.
It's literally gonna be a policy review.
Yes, I'm just.
All the old oak trees on Old Westminster Road.
So you want those twelve policy.
I drove by there again today. They're getting scary.
If you want.
I know it's money, but have you been down that road lately?
Old Westminster, you go down there a lot?
All the old oak trees.
Can I hold it, guys? Let's deal with this first, and then, and we, and we can talk about it.
It's all we're done with. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Chip.
So, can we have a?
Motion to approve the schedule as listed.
So, policy review calendar.
Yeah.
I follow the schedule, but, uh, the policy review calendar with Heather's printout.
For FY twenty-five.
And it, and it is a revolving and living document. On the nights that are long, we're not gonna sit there and be.
No, I, no, uh, nope.
No.
Not even taking product.
Any, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Opposed? Motion passed.